Okay, so it's May fourteenth, two thousand twenty. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the New Market School Board. We are again meeting in under the emergency section of the of the of RSA ninety-one A. Two dash comma three small B. And the Governor's Executive Order two thousand twenty dash zero four, Section eight, and Emergency Order number twelve, Section three. Welcome, everybody. I hope everybody's doing fine. It's nice to have the sun out and no wind for a change. But we've got a agenda that's been published. I'd like to start out by having everybody do sort of a roll call. Again, let us know if there's anybody with you. This is Mike Kennison. There's nobody with me.
Elizabeth McKinney, there's no one with me.
Kimberly Shelton, no one's with me.
Gary Swanson, I'm alone.
Amy Tilton, alone.
Okay, I think that does it. Susan, did you chime in?
I am alone.
All right. So we'll begin tonight with, well, we always begin with public comment. I have received no public comment on any agenda items. And Susan, have you?
Patty did not receive any any comments.
Okay. So then let's move on to student reports. It's been a while since we heard from the student representative. She's on tonight. Taylor, why don't you take it away?
Yeah, hi. So there's been a couple of changes with just testing, especially for juniors. The new SAT administration will be on September twenty-sixth, and that's a Saturday. SAT registration will be open the week of May twenty-sixth, and students in the class of two thousand twenty-one will have early access to this registration for August, September, and October. So the ACTs are actually still on for June thirteenth. Some of the locations have been changed, but still on. AP testing has been running, and it's going to run till the twenty-second of May. The exams are a little different this year. They're forty-five minutes long now, and they're open book with essay-based questions. So, yeah. And then high school student government is holding elections Monday, May eighteenth. Students submitted their work, their speeches Wednesday. So those will be in now, winners, I believe, will be announced the day of. I don't know. But National Honor Society is also having applications for anyone who wants to run for a position, and those are due tomorrow, May fifteenth. And that's all I have.
All right. Any questions for the student rep? Thank you, Taylor.
Yeah.
And so School Board Committee reports. I'll go first. There's nothing new really to report out of the Building Committee. We just, as I reported last time, they're just finishing up punch list items by and large. And everything should be done done by the end of June on terms of punch list stuff. They've been moving furniture into the into the new spaces. That's really all we have to report on that. Any other committee reports? Hearing none.
It's Amy, I do. So I was the committee for the Communication Committee, I guess, is no longer. I had, I wrote to Susan because I hadn't heard anything, and she said that it's it's over now that we, you know, went through the elections and the and that, I guess, that's it. So, yeah.
Wrapped up?
Wrapped up.
All right. Well, thank you for that updating me. It's again, I probably say this at every meeting, but I truly mean it. Thank you for folks, everybody, board members included who serve on these committees. That's the work that nobody sees and where things, you know, get done. And appreciate that on that.
Are all the other committees, sorry, this is Gary. Our committee's done or what? Or do we plan to start those back up again? And we had what the Superintendent Insurance Committee Entry Plan and?
Susan can elaborate. I think Susan can can, yes. Go ahead, Susan.
Sure. So since we found ourselves in this public health crisis, all of our time and energy has had to shift away from, you know, the work that we were engaged in at the time over to trying to figure out how to deliver learning experiences and deliver services to kids remotely. So though there is some warfing done on some of these projects, there is no capacity to support committee work right now on those particular topics. So Communications and Website Committee had done, you know, some work around the budget, and their focus was really on getting some stakeholder input, you know, about how people would like to see the website redesigned. That information, the last meeting we had was sharing out of the results of that survey that went out to parents and students and staff. And Jason and Patricia are working actively with our provider to redesign the website based on the feedback that we got. So we still, although we were hoping to have that work done, you know, by May, for obvious reasons, we won't be able to meet that target, but we should have that done before the end of June. So the committee doesn't do that part of the work. You know, that part of the work is done by professionals. And so we're still on target to complete the work, but the committee portion of it has been completed. As far as the Entry Plan Committee, I've been working intermittently and have had Patricia working intermittently to put together, you know, a summary of student outcomes and some data around that. So we almost have actually a draft of that section of what the entry plan would be. But again, there just really isn't a whole lot of capacity to be focusing on that in the middle of this situation we find ourselves in. So there's a little bit of work being done on some of these committees, but it is, it just can't be a focus area with everything else on the plate. Also, the third grade group continues to meet and not not in a large, on a large scale, but they're still pursuing, you know, ideas and curriculum and ways that we can take the language arts curriculum from the first and second grade and make sure that when they get to the third grade, we're building off of that. So that that work is still going on. Beyond that, there just is not really any capacity to to be holding those type of committee meetings. I'll be talking later on tonight about a new committee that we're setting up to focus on the idea of, you know, reopening schools. And that's really got to be the focus of our work right now. So we'll plug away to the extent that we can, but, you know, kind of is a level of urgency around figuring out, you know, how we're going to do summer programming, how we're going to open schools, what makes sense for us, reimagining graduation, all of those other things that we have spent time on. So that's kind of the status of the committee work right now.
Susan, if I'm not mistaken, this is Kim. The Culture and Climate Committee has been meeting and organizing different events, right?
Oh, yes, yes. That's a, that's.
A staff committee.
Yeah, that's a staff committee. We've been active, you know, because we're trying to focus on wellness, the social emotional health of everybody, you know, our students, our staff, our community. Just because we're in this current environment doesn't mean that we can't enjoy different life in different ways. So, yes, so we had the Reverse Parade. Crazy Hair Day was yesterday. We're having the end of our lip sync, you know, videos have to be in by tomorrow. The viewing of that will be at the end of this month. And then we also have a Guess Who event that's going to take place next week. So, yes, yes, we've been working on those kinds of things, trying to find activities that everybody can participate in, staff, students, community members, families. And, yeah, so that committee's been been active this last month. Thank you for asking.
Great, thank you.
Great. Any other thoughts or questions on committees? If none, Susan, that may be a good segue into your report.
Yes. So as, as I mentioned, we've been very, very busy. Graduation was really a huge focus of our administrative time last week, coming up with ways that we can still provide a program for our kids that that honors all of the constraints that we have, but trying to make it as personal and personable as we possibly can. And we continue to work out the details of that. So we have the meeting every week for a couple of hours, dividing up the work, getting things in place, coming back together, taking next steps. So a lot of work around graduation continues. Of course, honoring the top ten last week. Interviewing for open faculty and administrative positions. I'll be talking to you about the details of that in a little while when we're in non-public. And then again, when we're in back in public session. A lot of work around the master schedules at the junior, senior high school. And we're making progress there. It's a little challenging because, of course, what we're doing next year, though it's becoming clearer, you know, what the landscape is, we haven't really begun our work there. And the state just ramped up and had their first meeting on reopening schools. They have a task force in place. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. And then, you know, we've been engaging in webinars and trying to get our head around, you know, you know, what other schools are doing. You know, of course, you know that, or maybe you don't, that in Europe, many schools are opening back up. So was on a webinar earlier this week, and the administrative team is viewing those now that had principals or superintendents from Denmark, South Korea, and Germany, two different locations in Germany, talking about the the measures they've had to take and the framework they've used in order to be able to welcome staff and students back into the school, very different than what we're doing now. Maintaining social distancing. And so that was enormously beneficial. So we're, you know, we're trying to gather data and get our minds around, you know, what is, what is the most likely scenarios for us in the upcoming school year? So, you know, we're fertilizing our minds. And, you know, one, one part of that, of course, will be to set up a planning committee. So yesterday I sent out the staff an invitation if they're interested in participating in in this planning committee for reopening schools next year. To please let us know. I'll be sending out an email tonight to families, parents, community members, asking them to send us in a letter if they're interested in in joining in on that plant, those, that planning group. Certainly, board members will be involved in that as well. And I think, you know, one of the things that as superintendents, principals, and teachers, certainly all of us are, are concerned about is that, you know, all of this is coming at us so quickly that sometimes it's hard to digest all of the information and then be able to come up with solutions when sometimes the problem definition shifts out from underneath our feet. One of the things that's been hard is that getting guidance at the state level has been slow in coming.
Susan, Elizabeth, didn't the, didn't Edelbert just start off a reentry committee? From what I, some teachers are involved in. So they're looking into, they're just beginning to look into it, correct?
Today was this kickoff day, and I, and I, and I joined in on the meeting, not because I'm a member, but just because it's open to the public, and I wanted to listen in myself to see, to kind of see, you know, what it is that they're, what their charge is. And, yeah, from what I took away from that, they're really not going to have any guidance, you know, out at all, or recommendations, best practices, or suggestions, or anything to the middle of July. Doesn't do us a lick of good, you know, in July, because nobody's going to be here. And trying to gear up and, you know, get everybody in. So, I mean, it'll be interesting to see. There's no superintendents that have been invited to participate. There's no teachers on that committee. So they've certainly gotten an earful from our educational professionals about the fact that there's major stakeholder groups that are not even at the table when they're having these conversations about how we're going to do this. So those that are responsible for the outcomes are not invited to the discussion. So very disappointing. We've given that feedback to the commissioner. That said, I will say that I think the commissioner has done a pretty good job. We meet together, superintendents and the commissioner, twice a week on a conference call, and and we try to work our way through some of the challenges that we're faced with locally. And so, you know, he has certainly been accessible, but, you know, even the graduation guidance wasn't really helpful, you know, to us. And we waited, and we waited, and and then we wind up having to make the decisions because we're not getting the information. We have summer school coming up. We, for the most part, every woman in the state's going with a remote model because we don't have any guidance from the state otherwise. And they're saying now that they're not going to even have it to us this weekend. And it's just too late to design programming if, you know, with with no lead time to do it. So sometimes there's a disconnect between, you know, state level. And it's not just a New Hampshire thing. It just is, you know, if you think about all the time and effort that it went into things like any, any initiative that's coming out at state or federal level, and they, they'll take a significant block of time to plan, and then they'll give us five minutes to try to implement and figure it out. So that's not uncommon, and it's not a, it just seems to be the nature of the beast. So most school districts are going to a remote model of summer school. And what we're looking at is a couple of different things. One, one of the things we were grappling with today was, you know, this idea of going more towards a tutoring model. So what we're going to be doing in the last five days of school is identifying competency gaps. So we have some targets that we're trying to meet with all students. Not every student's making those. There's kids that were disengaged before we went into a remote model of instruction. They continue to be disengaged. And we're still trying to, you know, on a, sometimes multiple times a week, trying to reach out to those families and kiddos and trying to find ways to to get them, you know, back and, you know, and on task. But, you know, we have limitations on on what we can do. So we're going to look at those gaps when we're together as a faculty, after kids are done for the year. And then we're thinking, you know, a more of a tutoring model. Haven't worked out all the details, but our current thinking is that it wouldn't just be for special education students, that, you know, perhaps a better way to approach this is to to have a model of tutoring where where teachers, we would pay over the course of the summer to have a caseload of students that they're working with those students. That way, there's flexibility at home with the students as well as with the faculty to be able to help support them. Some kids might need support in the area of science, and other kids might be needs support in the area of math. Some might need multiple areas, and and this way it would be more flexible. So we're kind of, we're trying to look at that and see if there's, there's a way to implement a strategy like that instead of the traditional way of doing credit recovery. I know Erica and her staff are actively working on similar ways to deliver services for special education students that might regress if they don't have continued programming during the summer period. So those are the things that that we're looking at. Again, if we don't have the guidance, and we still don't have that, there, it, it, you know, it's impossible to come up with the, you know, strategies to be able to work out, you know, how we would implement that, to then reach out to staff and see if we've got folks that are interested, then getting them together, doing some orientation, getting resources together. It just doesn't happen like magic. Meanwhile, we're still working with kids in the current year, trying to get people over over the finish line. So it's, it really is a challenge. So one of the things we know for for certain, and I say this frequently, is that that there is no one size fits all answer. You know, we're doing a model of graduation that most other school districts just, it's not feasible. We can do it because we're small, and we've got space, and we can social distance. We've learned from having a parade last week that folks will follow the protocols. You know, that was a big test, you know. Are are folks going to follow through with the protocols that we put in place? And and if so, then it means that, you know, we can, we can, you know, continue to explore other ways that we can connect without coming in contact with one another in a way that compromises anybody's health. So some of the things that we've learned, besides one size doesn't fit all, and what we do in New Market's not going to be the same thing as they do in Exeter, though that we'll be have to, you know, do some, some things will be similar, but it can't be identical. And we don't have the resources that they do there. But on the other hand, we're small. We're not trying to make something work for six or seven different communities. You know, transportation for us is going to be a different animal than transportation in Exeter or or somewhere SAU that has to transport kids from multiple towns. So there'll be different implications for different SAUs. One thing that's for certain is that until we have a vaccine that is developed, has gone through all the testing trials and has been approved, and then distributed to our population, that we will not be able to come back to school in the way that we knew it before we went out. It's just not practical. And so we know that when we come back together in the fall, that we're going to have to take precautions to maintain social distancing, not lock down, but some social distancing. We're going to have to follow new safety guidelines like masks and washing your hands and limiting gatherings. And it was enormously helpful to listen to the leaders in Europe talk about how they accomplish this. So it was very helpful in starting to fertilize our minds around, you know, the possibilities there, what's worked well, you know, what we've learned, will all be things that we will be talking with with staff about. I know that Joanne, President of the Teachers Union, has been, her leadership's been invaluable during during our travel through remote learning. And she and her executive board sent out a survey to faculty yesterday to get some information from them about what they think is going well and offer, offer us up some valuable data about their perceptions of this and what we can learn from it and what they need. So we'll be getting data around that coming in. You know, there are, there are questions we're going to have to contemplate, you know. First one is, first and foremost, is can we open schools in the fall, you know, within the parameters established, you know? And there's a lot of logistical pieces. And then there's a lot of educational pieces that that have to be worked out. You know, scheduling being one, but but also, you know, how do we get the kids here? You know, how do we?
I'm sorry, you, you had mentioned at the beginning of a, you're starting, in addition to all the things that are going on right now, a forming a, I guess, a steering committee, and that with some subcommittees to start exploring all of these elements of opening school in the fall under these initiatives. And what's your thinking in terms of of the makeup of those committees? Is it going to be stake, different stakeholders and?
I'm almost there, Mike. Bear with me.
Oh, okay. I'll go back on mute.
Yeah. So, you know, some of the questions, like I said, will, that we'll have to ask, you know, is, is what we're proposing, whatever the options are, educationally sound, you know? How do we ensure and build in proper social emotional supports for students, staff, and families? What modifications do we need to make this, to operationalize, you know, whatever the plan is? Now, what, what is, what does student life look like in this new world? You know, what are the financial, financial implications, ramifications for doing this, you know? And, you know, I think the thing that's going to be most important, you know, it's, it's different. Like in the, in the fall, when we open up, students are going to go up to the next grade. And one of the first things you spend really the first month or so doing, and perhaps forever you do this, is to establish relationships between faculty and students. And, you know, because this happened in, you know, late winter, early spring, teachers had developed those relationships with students. And that's a key part of teaching. You know the strengths and challenges of your students, and so you're able to help and support them. When you're getting a new crop of students that are coming into your, your classroom, then you have to get to know them. And to be able to just open school in a remote model without having any face-to-face contact would be a whole different animal than what we had to do this spring. So because of all of these, because this impacts every aspect of what we do, what the structure will be is that we'll have a steering committee, and then we'll have some working groups. And the working groups, although I haven't quite identified the actual functional areas, they will look something like, like I've just described. There'll be one that's looking at, you know, the implications for academic services or instruction. There'll be one that will be looking at, you know, operational challenges, you know, and how do we overcome them? There'll be a group that's going to have to look at student services and take a deep dive into the implications for different models to delivering student services effectively. There'll have to be, you know, a group that that takes a look at, you know, you know, families and the broader community and wellness. And so once I get a list of folks that are interested in participating in the committees, you know, I'll, I'll kind of build them out so that we have representation of, from people, you know, from appropriate stakeholder groups in in the various working groups so that we can take deep dives into them. We know that this is what I think we've kind of all come to as superintendent was that there's really only two possibilities really for September. One is some kind of a hybrid model of what we're doing now. Hybrid meaning between some kind of a blended learning environment where kids come into the school for a portion of their learning and do remote learning during other times. And and then the other, if there happens to be some kind of a significant outbreak, that then we'd have to be prepared to just go with the remote learning model. And so, so really, the committees would be looking at the different ways to structure a hybrid model, and then what kinds of things would we do if we had to open schools with, you know, a similar approach that, you know, we're, we're employing right now, which is remote learning, remote services. And so, you know, there's, there's some work and conversations to take place there. There'll be, and I would see these committees working through the summer. And I'm not saying every day or or whatnot, but there would be a role because this will be an iterative process. We'll, we'll discover things. We'll, we'll think we'll have a great idea, and then we'll find out, well, it's a great idea, but you can't execute, you know? Or here's the challenges, and can we overcome those challenges? And it might take a little bit of time to work through some of those. And so, you know, that's really the work we have to focus on ahead. So that was the big part of my report was just to bring you up to speed on, you know, what we're kind of seeing in the broader landscape around us for the next couple of months. We're going to stay remote. We're going to work to try to figure out how we can go with a hybrid approach to. We're going to work to try to figure out how we can go with a hybrid approach to open school next year. And that can take a variety of different forms. And some of the work of the planning committee and the steering committee will be to come up with the the best scenario for us here in Newmarket. So that's, I have one other item on my report, and I just want to give a shout out for a job well done to our student services department. So this is Erica's department, and this is her and all of her staff. We got notification from the Department of Education. They did an audit and untimeliness of initial evaluations for students who on on IEPs or who have been recommended and for for IP. And the Bureau has determined that Newmarket has a compliance percentage of 100%. And so that is a huge accomplishment. And I just want to give a shout out to our student services staff for meeting that amazing target of 100% compliance. So I just I just publicly give them a little shout out for a job well done. So that is my report for this evening.
Do any board members have questions?
Yeah, I was just wondering, it sounds like if we're going to have a steering committee working over the summer, we can use some of the state guidance when it comes out in July. Are you thinking of a committee starting then or you kind of try to get it going earlier and pick up that information when it becomes available?
No, we'll be starting next week. We can't wait till July. We would never have anything in place to launch.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions?
Susan, this is Amy. I just have one question. I know this is probably on the not even in your mind right now. But as far as the fall is concerned, are we just going to assume that sports will be out of the question for the school?
I think we'll know better when guidance comes out and we see how this is playing out in New Hampshire and more specifically in our region. But if I'm if I'm looking at what what is happening in Europe, where they are opening, they are not, there are no contact sports that are that they're even contemplating. And it's not just that, because you can't social distance.
Right, right.
And and so it's not just sports, and those are the things that we have to get our our minds around. If we're going to come back into our buildings, we still have to limit exposure, right? And so, you know, none of them have open cafeterias anymore. There is no such thing as, you know, gym classes or or other other recess is not done where the entire third grade goes out. They're they're just that type of thing is not.
Not happening.
It's not happening. Now, will you evolve into being able to do some things? Perhaps we'll, because they're opening now, you know, we can learn from their experiences. And one of the things I'll have the steering committee, actually everyone that participates in this. I've been curating some resources like the ones that I've been sharing with our leadership team. And I'll share those out so everybody, including you, because all of you will participate, will get to see these. So it helps you to like see how, you know, you know, how, what the types of possibilities are. It's not going to work exactly the same here as it is there. Certainly, we're going to need some guidance from the state before we can finalize plans. But let me give you an example, just knowing that, knowing that we we can't do that, but kids, if we're serving lunches, are going to probably have to be brown bagged in at their seat. That kids in the in one classroom are not going to be able to engage with kids in another classroom in order to keep the social distancing protocol. So that would probably mean that we have to have, we we would have to have smaller class sizes. Perhaps, not perhaps, because you, right now, our classes are for the most part over 15. I know in Denmark, they're particularly with Denmark, they're holding class sizes to 15 because they can socially distance within that. But kids would have to have desks, and the desks are in a specific spot, and students go to that specific desk and nobody else uses that desk. So there's no no opportunity for cross contamination. But if you do that, again, we're going to have to have, you know, we're going to have to spend some money on some furniture because the furniture we invested in is like small groups and tables and and things like that. We don't, you know, we don't have in all areas separate desks. We will probably have to then repurpose some spaces that we're not going to be using for their intended purpose to be able to recreate, you know, some classroom space. So those are the kinds of things, you know, that they have done. I'm not saying that's what we're going to do. I'm just saying this is the kinds of things that they have done in order to be able to reintroduce staff and students into, and there's a bunch. So I I could spend a half an hour going through all the things that they talked about. But that that will be, you know, all shared once I can get the planning committee launched, which will be next week. So I I'll send out the page to Karen. You all will, you know, get more information about this. I'll have each of you on one of my work groups so that this, you know, everybody has, you know, knowledge in an area and we can, you know, share share ideas.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions?
If if none, Dave Jack is with us tonight. Hi, Dave. Thanks for joining us. You have you have several items on the agenda. Why don't you take it away?
And you can hear me?
Yes, loud and clear.
Okay, great. I've got three pieces this evening. This is more the the normal work that we would continue to do under any circumstances. But some of the things here are things we do annually, so it has nothing, we're not driven by anything that has changed as a result of this pandemic. The first piece is the that you have in front of you is the FY21 food service meal pricing recommendation. We're required by the the federal government, because they give us our reimbursements for food service, that we go through a a pricing calculator to look at what what we're charging and to determine if that's is equitable in terms of what the the feds give you back in reimbursement. Each year you go through that generally is, and you can see the worksheets are were attached in behind the MyCover lever. Linda produced the the document. We do that onsite. And for the most, I I'm pretty not pretty sure. I know it's correct, the number. And what it's saying is that in both at the high, the junior high school, middle school and the elementary school, you're recommending a 10 cent increase. While I guess I'm never happy with an increase, here's the what happens if you don't keep up with it. If you, if we have a 10 cent increase this year and we choose not to increase that, then when we do this calculation next year, it'll take that 10 cents. And whatever comes up next year will get stacked on top of it. At some point, you'll have to make the increase. What happens if you don't make an increase? If you don't make an increase, which is entirely within the board's prerogative, at there's a calculation that determines the number of meals that were served in the year, whatever multiplied by this 10 cents. And at the end of the year, you have to transfer back into the food service account from the general account that money. So what the federal government is saying is we want you to keep up, and all school districts are treated the same way. We want you to keep up with the pricing as we continue to do the reimbursement. So that's really, they don't want to give a reimbursement that's more than what you are charging for a meal. So they're asking you to, you know, to kind of do your end of it. And at the same time, they're continuing to do the reimbursements. So that's why we go through this every year. There are some times when, and I guess, and I've been in other communities where boards simply don't do it. But as I said, if you don't do it, what happens is you still have to pay that 10 cent increase. It it's not being charged then to the public, is being charged to your budget at the end of the year, and that money gets transferred back into it. And I I don't mean that as a as a a threat or anything like that to say if you don't increase, it's going to happen. It's just, I just want to make sure you're cognizant of all the details that go into this and why we're doing it.
Dave, can I ask a quick question? Elizabeth, so we did this last year, we had to give money to the food service because people aren't paying their bills. But if we increase this by 10 cents, would more people be eligible for free lunches? Because that increases it by quite a bit.
So to so to answer your question, one of the things we struggle with and and everybody struggles with is making sure that people are aware of the process for applying for free and reduced applications. And it's important that they do that. It's completely anonymous. And when they do that, there's, you know, the the reimbursements that come back to to the school district as a result of that are are very good for for helping to do the food service. The debt that you're talking about, a couple of ways you accrue debt is it could be folks that are not eligible for free and reduced, but still, for whatever reason, aren't paying that, aren't able to pay. So if you're not eligible for the app, if you're not eligible under the guidelines, then it's really not going to help your debt as far as that is concerned. Your student debt is is something that I think every district in New Hampshire struggles with. Everybody struggles with how do we collect that? And then, you know, it's an ongoing battle. So I couldn't tell you unequivocally that your debt is going to increase by this. I can only tell you that if you, when you start to raise food services by a quarter, let's say you delay this process for a couple of years, what's more inclined to happen is the year you do that, the first couple of months, there's a great deal of resentment because now it's 25 cents rather than five cents or 10 cents. It's 25 cents. It the increment is much bigger. And for the first two months, you start to see, first couple of months, you'll begin to see a decline in participation. It'll come back, but you would have lost those days. You'll never gain those days back. But at the same time, the bigger the increase, the more adverse reaction you're going to get.
Hi, Dave. Gary Swanson. I guess there's a there's a couple of things I wanted to discuss with you while we have you. One, I'm very concerned about where the economy is going to be going because of this this pandemic, which makes me question whether it makes sense to hold off on an increase because we're going to be helping out these people next year by absorbing the costs for them. However, we also are using their tax dollars to do that. So I guess I'm really, as well as, like you said, the stacking effect. And I guess I'm really kind of torn on what is a reasonable course of action. I suppose the budget we've already been set, I wouldn't say in stone, but it's somewhat fixed. I guess I wonder what your thoughts were on kind of how you like to see it handled or you would handle it.
I guess there isn't a right answer in this. I think you hit the nail on the head, given where we are and where folks are in the economy. It doesn't seem right to have to do an increase. And if as a board, you're willing to take that on, that will help in the near term, but in the long term, when it comes back with that stacking, that may come back and you might have to take it on again that year just to just to help as a result of that because you won't have the revenues coming in. I will tell you, and I probably would be remiss if I didn't tell you, the way it stands right now, as far as the meals that are being served today as a result of the pandemic and the way we're doing it, the government is reimbursing you for all of your meals. It it actually will, I think, in the end, in terms of just a bottom line or a a piece where we might have thought it would have been a great a deficit in food service, I don't believe is going to occur to the same extent that we may have thought that because people weren't participating, because every meal is being reimbursed as we speak. So maybe you're you're serving half the meals that you would have on a normal day. You now are getting reimbursed for half the number, which is a piece of revenue that is more than we would have normally got under normal circumstances. So but back to your piece, I don't know if there's a right or wrong answer to this, Gary. I I think most, I I think the the best that I could say to you is you have two pieces here, you at least have everything laid on the table. If you put it up 10 cents and we remain in the same, to to go back to what Susan had said in her report, if we go back to to looking at, maybe we'll be in a similar situation for a time next year, and we still have to do some of this, then I think the federal government would continue to participate in some fashion, though I don't know how much. I mean, the longer we go into this, the harder it's going to be for them to participate at the rate they're participating as we speak.
Great, good. No pun intended, food for thought. Thank you.
Hi, this is Amy. I just had a question. Did we increase last year? And if so, how much?
Amy, to be honest with you, I don't know the answer to that. I'm I'm not sure if anybody I'm guessing you did because I'm not seeing anything that would tell me different.
Amy, I don't have the best memory. I'm sure we did, and I think it was five cents. We'll find that out.
Okay.
I I can revisit that and find it out.
That's kind of what I remember, Mike. I definitely remember there was an increase, and I feel like five. And Gary, to your point, I was just thinking, you know, yes, we don't want to put any more burden on families. That is definitely a concern at this time, but there also conversely might be increased cost of food because we're seeing that personally. So I just, this is a tough situation in so many ways. We're in uncharted territory. You know, and I I speak to Elizabeth's point to say, I hope that any family who could benefit from free and reduced lunch is doing so and will continue to do so moving forward without the shame, as as Dave said. So importantly, it's a confidential situation and and no one is gets any situation from that. So I just think that it's a tough situation.
It's a very good point. And, you know, the other thing is, in addition to free and reduced participation, Newmarket doesn't turn anybody away who who needs a meal at the schools. So that that will always happen and, you know, and I think, you know, to what everybody's just said, to what you said, Dave, maybe there'll be more federal participation in the fall, maybe they won't. One way or the other, we'll serve all the students.
I think I think you're, I don't believe there's a right or a wrong answer to this. Whatever we do is if you raise the prices, it's it becomes more difficult again for families. If if the price of food, the cost of the product goes up, right now, we've been able to kind of work our inventory down that you would normally. So we're not, you know, we're working the inventory as we, at the end of the year, you want to have as as small an inventory on hand as you can. We've been doing some of that. But if you're looking in the the short term, if you were, if I said, if you if you said only for the short term, the right answer is probably don't increase. But we know that in the long term, in in, you know, two years out, three years out, whatever happens, it's going, you're going to be at a position where the increase may be more all at once and have an equally devastating effect because it's the fact that you can kind of pay for the increase out of the general fund, if you will, monies that were not used at the end of year, just transferred into food service. That's one thing, but what doesn't go away. And if it did go away, then the direction would be clear. But the fact that this gets stacked from one year, just depending on what the numbers I mean, next year, it could maybe only five cents difference, or who knows what it would be because we'll, it would have to do a wait and see. And to further complicate that, all of these, all of our notions on this are predicated on what happens in October. So next October, if the numbers aren't even relative, relative, you know, they don't look like other years in food service, the feds are going to have a tough time quantifying. the feds are going to have a tough time quantifying this calculator going forward simply because they won't have any base to go by.
Dave, I don't want to belabor the conversation much more, but one last question. Are we allowed to increase it by any amount we decide within that range? And my thinking is, if, to your point, they're stacked next year, maybe next year, we decide it's, it's 20 cents, we decide to go 15 cents or 12 cents, are we allowed to do that?
I think you can, you can put it up like, it's usually in increments of five cents.
Okay.
So if you, if you were, if you want, if you, if you decided this year, you only wanted to raise the five cents, then you're kind of, you know, you've still got to come up with the five cents, you know, times whatever the meals are at the end of the year, but you're five cents closer.
Sure, all right, thank you.
I know this is an aside and not germane to your report, Dave, but I just wanted to thank Linda Hoppe and her team for all they have done throughout the year and especially in this current time, because they've done a great job feeding a lot of folks, and I appreciate it.
Dave, just one more quick thought on that, and you may have answered it already, and I, is that one way or the other, do we need to make that decision now? Or could we see how things play out as the months come in and make a decision later? Or do you have to set it now?
If you don't set it now, by the time you roll it out, so what, really, the timeline here is during this, as we go through the summer, we start to put out the free and reduced pieces, the price of lunches and so forth. So for the opening of school, obviously, you want to have your pricing all completed. We usually do it in the spring of the year. I mean, this is traditionally the time of year we do it. If you don't do it, then it makes it really hard when you go to do your, when you go through your application process because the federal government gives you a certain amount of time. Up until October, you go what you had the previous year as far as free and reduced is after that. And so after that, you've got to have a new application on file, go through the whole piece to, that's, that goes through the process. So I think if you wait too long, Mike, I think it's going to, it's going to impede what we want to do. And to Gary's point, it might work against us on the free and reduced piece.
Thank you. Any other questions on that aspect? And I know you've got some other things on your, on your agenda, Dave?
I do. So do you want me to just go through and then we'll do it, decide whether we're going to vote at the end or?
Yeah, why don't we do that, why don't we keep going?
Okay, the next one, this is your annual audit. This year, we put the, you had had a, I think about a five-year contract before. Usually it's a three plus two with auditing firms, three years of guarantee. And then the last two years are, are contracts that the school district gets to say whether they want to continue. So it would be, and that's the way this contract, this bid was constructed is the same way. It's a three plus two, the last two years being option years, which is yours. We had two responses, one from your current auditor, Vashon Aklukey, and one from Plodgic and Sanderson. Both auditing firms are prominent in New Hampshire. Both have done a lot with municipal work as well as on the school side. And again, you can see by the, by the spreadsheet that I, the analysis of the bid, it indicates, you know, a lot of, just exactly what they've done. The other pricing is, is important because if there's other work to be done, that can add up fairly quickly. So we always take that into account. And then the last piece that we do below is when they put their work plans together, they usually tell us what the work plan is that we've asked for, how many hours? And you can see what the hours are involved here. After reviewing this and looking, looking at all the factors involved in here, it was the, and again, this wasn't an isolated decision on my part or, or anybody else. It's with discussion of the Central Office of Administration. We'd recommend Plodgic and Sanderson. The parts that came into play here were the responsiveness of the proposal. You can see the, the four or five areas, a cost being one, but not the determining, if you will, the sole determining factor. Historically, you have about every five to six years, I look back in the records that I was able to see, have changed auditing firms, just either through this process or just through normal attrition. It's not a bad thing to have different auditing firms from time to time. It gives a perspective as long as, and from our standpoint, as long as they're more than capable and they understand what we do, and these two firms are, have more than capable of that. The other piece that came into play a little, a little bit on the decision was student activity accounts. There's been a whole new, all across the United States, a new way of doing business, a different Gadsby, an accounting standard that's been in particular directed towards student activities. Plodgic and Sanderson has really written the guidelines for all school districts over the last couple of years in terms of a manual that we all have. When we have, every district I've been in has, has the document. But really in FY21, we should have been, going into that year, we should have been in Newmarket, should have been up and running in full compliance. I'm not sure that we are, not sure that we aren't, we probably have parts of it. And nobody's, certainly, there's nothing to worry about, but you do have to get into compliance at some point. I think Plodgic and Sanderson brings that strength to the table in that particular case. And the other piece that was, that was in consideration is here, is when could the audit be performed? The earlier you can get your audit done, the more accurate your figures are for the DOE 25, which is the end of the year report that we're, we have to file. It's supposed to be in by September 1 every year. And the one figure everybody looks for that's coming out of an app is what's the unreserved fund balance? What is left over from the prior year? Because that's the money that goes back to offset tax, taxes as part of a revenue stream when you set your tax rates in October. So the earlier we can do it, and the way that we crafted this audit was to say, listen, you have to get, we want this audit done by August the 15th. We want all the work done so we know the numbers. Doesn't mean you get the audit in front of you, but you have the actual numbers we'll be, we'll be submitting. And we were able to do that. So you don't often get a chance to get in a different, different position because everybody wants that, and there's over 100, 100-plus districts that want to be first in line. And you have managed to move to the front of the line as a result of the way we crafted the bids. So, but what I would recommend is that after, as I said, with the consultation and so forth, the recommendation would be to, to look at Plodgic and Sanderson for your auditors for the upcoming three years and then the additional two years, should you desire to go with them.
Thanks, Dave, any questions on that from the board?
Dave, this is Amy, I have a question. With the other pricing listed on this, does that mean whatever is not included in the, say, example for the first bid of $66,000, additional work, like overtime? What, what, what is this other pricing? How does that work?
The other pricing is if we should desire to have them do something beyond the scope of the audit.
Oh, okay.
Additional, I have never, I've never, in more, in all firms, when we ask for this, just in case there's something we need done, and then this is the rate that's going to be, or we get into something that got completely out of control and we have to deal with it, and it wasn't part of that pricing in here, so it gives us a little bit of flexibility.
Okay.
99% of the time, that's for additional work that we ask, have done, which wasn't included in the bid specs.
Okay. And I'm just curious, so we, we've been with Vashon, correct?
You have been with that one? Yes.
And I noticed that there's, you know, a $7,100 difference in their pricing. And you're choosing, you chose the other company because of the things you mentioned, those four, five items actually, in their experience level with schools? Is that what you?
I think those were all factors. I think I mentioned one of them was, I think is a critical factor, is the student activity piece. Because I think that they'll, they'll, you know, their focus, they've had their focus on that. They've written the manual, if you will, that we all use in the state, that, and they supplied it to districts, regardless where they did work with you. I think that's important going forward to that. I also think that it's important once in a while to change, to, to have somebody different look at things. I mean, you get, sometimes we get complacent. I don't think any district, whether we get a finding or not, is perfect. If you don't get a finding, then I would wonder why you didn't get a finding because there's always something that we should be looking at and something where that we should, you know, maybe there's a better way of doing business. The $7,100, the $7,100, keep in mind, is also spread out over, over five years. And if at the end of three years, you just don't see it, then really the difference at the end of three years is about 15, is about $4,500. Your call at the end to go into the fourth year as to whether or not you engage.
Okay.
And I don't recall, Dave, but I read it in a couple of places, but I'm not sure if it's in our policies. I don't have them all memorized. The best practice was to change up your audit firms every three or four years. It may have been in the municipal association materials. And it's not to say that your existing firm isn't doing the job. It's just best practice to have a new set of eyes look at it.
It's not a policy, but it's just general practice that we've learned over the last few years that we should change auditors, all districts do it.
I think one of the things you, you have to keep in mind, and if you were to change every couple of years, then I'd wonder why. You've been pretty consistent. I mean, you had a firm, I think you go back, the research I had, the prior firm to Klukay was Grislak. And you may have had Plodgic and Sanders in here years and years ago. I don't know that, but it seems to me that you have, every five to six years have, have changed, you know, changed around. And it could have been that through the bidding process, it could have been you just wanted to change any number of reasons. It's not a bad idea, it just gives you a different way to bid. It doesn't mean we're, you're, you're trying to get, you're trying to get to a better place because you necessarily didn't. I don't think there's, there was any intention here that, that, you know, there was something done wrong or any type of inconvenience or anything, that's not the case at all. This is more of a good business practice, once in a while, I think you need to do that. In particular, when you get new administration, it's not a bad time to simply have, you've had, you've got new administration on board. It's not a bad time to simply go through and do it. It's just, it's a good time to do it.
Okay.
Dave, I had one question about the discrepancy in the hours of work. It looks, you know, if I'm reading this correctly, it looks like there's 26 hours that we're getting from Plodgic, which I can't say right, and Sanderson. What does that, how, where's that disparity coming in? And I, I'm assuming that goes to the price somewhat.
It does, and part of it, I think, is part of that difference, some of those hours will just be the initial setup.
Okay.
There's a cost to when you come in to setting up. I mean, it gets pretty automatic in the second year, particularly when we do a lot more stuff remotely. We ship stuff out to them, but you have to set those systems up that first year. I think some of it's there. I think they're going to put some more hours into that student activity piece. So I, and that was one of the pieces that we looked at as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I would like to reiterate that point because when you're looking at the number of hours that's in their work plan, Plodgic and Sanderson is going to be putting forth 140 hours versus 114. So when you're looking at the difference in how much your audit is each year, the quality of your audit inevitably is going to be at a higher level if people are putting more time and effort into it. And so I would argue that if you took the hour, hours put in and divided it by the annual cost, without question, Plodgic would still come in less, you know, on an hour by hour basis. So sometimes, you know, it's value, I always say it's about the value of the contract more than it is about, you know, the bottom line sometimes. We're not seeing huge variation here. I've seen contracts like this come in, $10,000 a year difference. Well, that would be a totally different conversation. But we do have some things that are going to need a deeper dive because we've had three or four business managers here in less than 12 months. And so as much as I love having Dave here, and he's been most consistent and put the most time in, he's also coming off the back of having multiple, multiple people doing a whole lot of different pieces. And, and from what I recall from the fall, we have not implemented in any, any way the new standards for student activities. So there is going to have to be a deep dive. And I only know that because I remember Mary Delai, when she was here, you know, having conversations with the auditors at that time. And, and she said that, that, that those guidelines had not been implemented here. So there's going to, there's going to be work, you know, a lot more work. I think the good part is that we can get it done, done in a timely fashion. Plodgic and Sanderson is, you know, dollar for dollar, a little less expensive. And if we need to have some additional work done, especially in the next year to try to sort things out, that if we have to start paying any hourly rates, their rates are significantly less than Vashon's. So I support the recommendation to move forward with Plodgic and Sanderson for the next three to five years.
Thanks, Susan. It will come back and vote on these in a moment. But if no more questions on the audit bid recommendation, Dave, you have one more item?
Right, and I'm going to need some help probably from Susan on this one, but it is a, it's the computer equipment purchase. As you can see, there was a significant, there's a significant number of Chromebooks, computer carts, mini desktops, Windows laptops, all bundled into a bid. Jason Carey put the request for proposals out. He had six different bidders. The, we went through the analysis. There were some, as you can see on there, you can see some people, one company that is very, very low, which, but while it was low, it didn't have all of the ingredients in the bid that we asked for. So that was a company that we, that we would disqualify. And then was a matter of looking at, at the types of computers, the types of software, not the types, the processors, and the general types of computers that he had had success with. And so you can see at this point, he has recommended that the HP, HPI International vendor for a total cost of $145,500. It, what this provides is a lot more Chromebooks to be used in the one-to-one support in grades five and nine and, and so forth. So this is a piece that I think, I think the pricing here may be, in some cases, may be less than what we saw earlier in the year in terms of the total cost and some of the units. So we had done a little bit of a review there, but at the same time, I think that the fact that you're getting six people to bid, the other piece to it is, like everything else, if you don't do it at this time, you know, if you don't do it now, it's very unlikely as we go further into the year that we're going to, or later in the year, that you're going to get these because everybody is going through the process now, and this stuff is not readily available as it once had been.
Susan, and these, these, the technology is part of our regular cycle?
So some, we had put in the FY21 budget, the purchase of some laptops and Chromebooks, not this many. Not this many. Uh, but, you know, when Jason and I were talking this through, so there's a couple of things going on here. Because we're in this remote learning environment, using Chromebooks, asking teachers to use Chromebooks, to design, uh, you know, learning activities, um, to use a lot of this software. I mean, even rendering videos and things like that, record, I mean, these are things we weren't doing before, and we're doing them now. And so Chromebook is, uh, is just not, uh, sufficient to, to, it doesn't have the horsepower, it doesn't have the processing speed, that you would, you would expect if you were going to be delivering, um, you know, education in this way. So we need to get laptops in the hands of all faculty now. And if we wait until July, the likelihood that we'd even get it in their hands by September is questionable for one. And two, then they wouldn't have the entire summer to be using these devices to help modify their curriculum and instructional activities. So, um, we feel it's, it's pretty mission critical to, uh, move forward with this now as opposed to delaying for that reason. The, the, um, lead time on receiving these is four to six weeks for all of this. Because it just isn't, nobody has any of this in stock. Um, so what it would allow us to do is two things. One, it would be in the timeframe that would make these purchases eligible for, um, uh, grants. And so, um, although this is more money than we're aware of that we would be getting for grants, it would fall within the timeframe that the grant, that they'd be eligible, um, to buy from that source. So, so that's one. And two, we would have it, you know, hopefully by the end of June, if we purchase them tomorrow, so that, um, uh, we can get them set up and then staff will, you know, be able to come in. They'll turn in their old Chromebooks. Then we'd have these, those Chromebooks that then we could repurpose for other, um, personnel. We also have more backups, uh, Chromebooks for students. Um, you know, we, we, we did buy some. We may want to buy even more Chromebooks, uh, than, than this. And we could expand the, the purchasing of the Chromebooks, to make sure that we have enough for, you know, second graders, let's say, um, first grader, really kindergarten, there's not, you're not really, uh, they're more hands-on. But, um, nonetheless, if we're going to have to go to blended, if we were to have to go to remote, if students already had, uh, Chromebooks in their hands, we just don't want to get ourselves backed up and not, not have, uh, the technology available that we, we know that, uh, we're going to need for next year in a timely fashion. So, so that's why you're seeing this now, even though we have some money in next year's budget, new grant money that's been available through the CARES Act. These purchases would be not, not wholesale eligible for, but certainly eligible for. We have some additional capacity in our, um, current year budget for, uh, technology money that we haven't spent out yet. So, um, you know, we wouldn't be overspending lines to do this, um, because between what we have in the budget and, and what's available in grants, I think we, I think we'll land a pretty break, break even. That'll also, um, give us some capacity in next year's budget. So that as things prop up, when we get this planning committee together, and let's say we, we need to, you know, buy some other pieces of technology, or we need to modify the, you know, building in some way that, that we have the wherewithal to do that, because we've freed up, uh, some resources, um, in next year's budget. So that's the thinking behind that. That's why you're seeing this here now is because of the level of urgency and the, and the backlog of getting any kind of technology right now.
Thanks, Susan, for that explanation. Any questions from board members?
Um, yeah, it's Gary. At first I should, um, in the interest of, um, full disclosure, let everyone know that I used to work for Daystar. Uh, it was over ten years ago, and I have no affiliation with them, nor was I involved in the proposal at all. Secondly, are we saying that we just purchased, um, a hundred Chromebooks? And the teachers have a hundred and twenty-five, I'm guessing based on the number of laptops. So, but prior to the purchase of those one hundred Chromebooks, are we saying that we needed four hundred and fifty at that time? I guess I'm just surprised that we didn't hear about this when we discussed, um, paraprofessionals getting Chromebooks, uh, at the last meeting. I'm a little surprised by the quantity.
Um, the Chromebook quantity is the standard replacement quantity that you order. So every year, that's not a new item.
So, my- Here we buy, we replace two hundred and twenty-five Chromebooks?
Yeah, annually.
Oh, I see. So if we just replaced, if we just purchased a hundred, does that mean next year we're going to have to purchase three hundred and twenty-five Chromebooks?
Well, I guess we're going to have to see how long this situation we're in continues on. I mean, it, I would never personally, as long as I'm your superintendent, going to recommend it, that, uh, you go one-to-one all the way down to kindergarten. You know, but in this particular case, uh, we, we bought, um, enough Chromebooks so that every third, third grader could also have a Chromebook available for them. We have lab, uh, we have Chromebook carts. That's why you see some of those Chromebook carts available in other grade levels. And so the reason why the carts are on here is to be able to, um, take the Chromebooks that we bought for the third grade and have carts for them when they come back in once, at some point in time. You know, we go back to a, a more traditional brick and mortar, um, you know, environment.
So what happens, well, I guess two questions. What happens with the old Chromebooks? Are they purchased by a different-
They have end of life.
Or they sold back? Or is nobody, there's still-
So my understanding is that, um, this is, you know, again, uh, not going to be probably the, the perfect answer. But my understanding is that Chromebooks are purchased for, uh, fifth graders, and then they keep those Chromebooks until for three, you know, for fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Then they get a new Chromebook issued to them for, for their, um, high school years. Because really Chromebooks, the life, life cycle of the Chromebooks, like really two to three years, but you are on a replacement cycle of four years. And believe me, I was in classrooms, um, with those four-year Chromebooks, and you could tell they were working with, with four-year Chromebooks because, um, uh, the latency time, um, you know, half of them, you know, were not in, uh, booting properly. So anyway, that's the reason why. So you buy those so that you have enough to, uh, provide your fifth grade and then your ninth graders with new Chromebooks because those Chromebooks have hit end of life.
I see.
Yeah.
In essence, we have a thousand Chromebooks out there, and every year, we're going through a quarter of them.
Yeah. And because you're going on a four-year replacement cycle, you have to buy extra new ones because you're pushing Chromebooks way beyond, um, what would, in our environment, um, um, you know, really be reasonable to push. I was, I was shocked. Uh, we went Chromebooks in my prior school district with a two-year replacement cycle because, uh, when you really push the, they're, they're not, um, they're really, they're, they're not of the same quality, um, as you would find, obviously. When you're paying two hundred dollars, it's not the same as if you're paying for an eight hundred dollar piece of equipment, you know? You're just not going to. But, so you have to buy more each year because you're, you're pushing beyond the life, a, a natural life cycle for the piece of the equipment, the equipment that you have now.
Okay. I guess this will be kind of my theme for tonight, but I'm really concerned, um, about the, the recession we're in and the, the, the revenues and the effects of these decisions are going to have on taxpayers in the future. That's why I'm, I'm just so hesitant. But, uh, thank you. Very good explanation.
Susan, it's Elizabeth. If by purchasing these, we're kind of even forward-thinking, we're being more forward-thinking. If we do have to continue doing remote learning, our teachers need the equipment to do this work. They, a lot of them are working on these Chromebooks. They, they don't function well. If you're trying to teach a class, I can tell you that firsthand. And then just to be able to provide the extra Chromebooks to the people who need them, kids break them, we have to have backup. So I, I understand the taxpayer part, but I also think we have to continue thinking that this might be the way we're going to be in school at least for two years.
Certainly legality and responsibility plays a role in everything we do. Um, but put this in perspective, uh, you know, uh, uh, first of all, some of this purchase, most of it, I think, I, and, and Dave probably knows the numbers better than, than us, but it, it's stuff that was in cycle anyways, you know? But it, it, you know, given the need for this stuff in this environment, especially the laptops with teachers, so they can, they can be dynamic and present, um, as best they can in this environment. Um, I mean, in the overall scheme of things, the dollar figure we're talking here, at least to me, given the benefit of this, of these devices is, is, um, is reasonable, given, given the, given the overall amount that this represents of, of a budget. I forget what a budget is, it's something like, you know, I, I don't know off the top of my head, but it's twenty-something plus million. And this is, I want to be very careful. This is not to say that you, um, are not frugal and responsible, but I just, in the overall scheme of things, as, as a leadership, our, our first, um, our first responsibility is to make sure that students and teachers are getting what they need to execute the program. And, um, trust that Jason and, uh, and Susan have come to the most responsible way to do that. And, and nobody has a crystal ball, but I, I have confidence that they've done that.
Yeah. And I mean, think to what Elizabeth said, it, you know, strikes me that getting teachers', um, laptops is, is almost more paramount in some ways. That being said, uh, we didn't get this until a few minutes before the meeting, so I haven't had a chance to fully digest that. The laptops is, uh, themselves are a hundred thousand. So the Chromebooks are, are actually fairly inexpensive comparatively. So uh, certainly interesting.
Right. And yeah, and it's, and it's, yes. And, uh, I, I do think, um, I mean, we're, uh, we're all drinking from a fire hose a little bit these days. So I, I, I get your point. And, um, but I do appreciate that what you have is, is fairly clear. I was able to read it, uh, just before, just before our meeting. Jason for putting that together. It's really, it's actually, it's really clear.
Susan, can I ask you a question? On the, um, a hundred and twenty, it's Amy, by the way. Um, a hundred and twenty-five laptops, uh, for staff use, is that just for teachers or for teachers in Paris?
The laptops are for teachers. But when we get some of the Chromebooks turned back from teachers, then we'll have those available that then can be used by others until they fail. And then we'll have, you know, more, more replacement equipment to be able to backfill. But that's the idea.
I, I understand we need, you know, this is needed for us staff, but as Gary said, I mean, we just, I literally just printed this off ten minutes before the meeting. I just would have appreciated having this earlier, um, to digest it. So in the, you know, for the future, if we could have, if we have to vote on such a large amount, I, could we have it sooner rather than ten minutes before the meeting takes place?
The bid was, was due yesterday. It was a one-week turnaround.
Mm-hmm.
So there wasn't, there was no way-
But even like twenty-four hours. I mean, I, I understand that, but it just, you, you know, as a-
They have to be tabulated and reviewed. You have to make sure that the specs that the vendors submit are equal to the specs that you put out. So although it might seem like a simple matter of just turning it around and giving it to you, you can see that we didn't go with the lowest bidder. And the reason why is because they didn't meet all the performance specs that Jason put out. And you have to have the opportunity to be able to review that. We're not doing-
No, I understand that, but I just, I'm just saying, you know, as a board member, I, I'm voting just, you know, for the whole community and spending our money by making if I vote for this. So I just want to be, do my due diligence and, you know, look at it a little deeper rather than just make a quick vote. So that's all, that's my concern. I understand it's needed. I'm not arguing that point. I, I just, even twenty-four hours, no, you know, getting it twenty-four hours rather than right before the meeting. I'm just, that's all I'm saying.
Susan, I just had one quick follow-up. Um, I think you may have just answered it. Uh, just basically looking at the various types of laptops. Uh, so Jason was comfortable with that make and model laptop?
Yes. It met all the performance specifications we were looking for.
Great. Thank you.
And one last, I just want to remind you that all this money is not coming from the taxpayers. The good portion of the money that is going to go into funding this is coming from grants.
Would you know how much approximately? I'm just curious.
Um, we're still trying to, uh, sift and sort what we can, um, tap into FEMA money for. Dave and I were talking about this earlier. So there's different buckets of funding. We were on a call on Monday, um, trying to, and, and again, this information, it's not like we're sitting here with this information. We're getting it-
I know that. I, I understand that.
So, so, um, so we, we were made aware that there's FEMA money available. So some things we were going to use the grant money for, we're not going to tap into the FEMA money, um, so that we can keep as much money away from the taxpayers as possible. Um, it's, it's something that's important to me, that the taxpayers of the quarter last resort, not the quarter first resort. And Dave and I have had many conversations, and he knows that it's my strongest wish to close this year and be able to turn between a half a million and six hundred thousand dollars back to the community. I understand the ramifications that this pandemic is having on everybody. But I also have a responsibility to make sure that we can deliver the best instructional programs we can and communicate to you as quickly as possible what our needs are on the ground. And sometimes I don't get that information, um, as quickly as I would like it. And so I do appreciate how frustrating it can be to not be able to give, get information as, in a, in a timely as fashion as you would like. So I appreciate it. And believe me, um, the, the things that we can get to you, we're getting everything to you as soon as we, we possibly can. Giving all that we're trying to do, uh, simultaneously. So I get it. I understand. It's a big ask.
Thanks, Susan.
Thank you, Susan, for that. And, uh, any other questions or comments? And then I think we should go back and vote on these items. I don't hear any. So, um, let's, let's start with the, uh, the food service more pricing recommendation. Does somebody want to introduce the motion to that recommendation?
I'll make the motion like to accept the ten cents raise for lunches for next year.
I'll second that, Amy.
Elizabeth McKinnney made the motion. Uh, Amy Tilton seconded. Any further comment?
Um, I guess I'm inclined, uh, sorry, it's Gary. I guess I'm inclined to vote no this year, just for the reasons I think we articulated earlier, um, about the, the direct immediate impact it'll have on, um, people purchasing meals.
It's, it's a point very well taken, Gary. Any other, uh, comments?
My hope is that, um, families will look into doing the free and reduced lunches. That is the only reason why I'm voting yes on this, because I, I think that we are going to see such a, a raise in our prices. We have to keep up with it to keep our lunches going. And then perhaps more people will be inclined to, um, apply for the free and reduced lunches.
Any other comments?
A challenge also is not knowing what the consequences are in the future. You know, it's, it's, it's a hard thing. You know, none of us wants to see anyone have to pay any more for anything. At least I don't. I can say that for myself. But, you know, when I think about things coming back in a few years, and we have, we have to go twenty-five cents or, or something, that, that's a huge jump. So, you know, it's, it's not, the timing is not ideal, but I think, I'm not sure that we have a choice.
Let's do a roll call. Vote. All those in favor, um, just say aye. Mike Kennison, aye?
Elizabeth McKinnney, aye.
Kim Shelton, aye.
Gary Swanson, no.
Amy Tilton, aye.
Okay, it, uh, the motion passes from four to one. Um, the next item is the audit services bid recommendation. Recommending that we accept the bid from Plodzik and Sanderson. Does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the bid from Plodzik and Sanderson.
Gary Swanson will second.
Any further discussion? If none, um, all those-
If none, all those in favor please say aye, Mike Kennison, aye?
Elizabeth McKinney, aye.
Kimberly, aye.
Gary Swanson, aye.
Amy Tilton, aye.
The motion passes unanimously, finally, the technology equipment that we discussed. Dave, maybe you can read the number, but the bid is from HDI International, is that the company?
I'll make a motion to.
Yes.
Technology purchase.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion, Kimberly Shelton.
Any further discussion or comment from the board?
I always appreciate the report that Jason, on his committee and Dave, with your help, produced for us, because they're always very thorough and well thought out, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, any other comments? If none, let's do a roll call vote, Mike Kennison, aye?
Elizabeth McKinney, aye.
Kimberly Shelton, aye.
Gary Swanson, aye.
Amy Tilton, aye.
All right, so that motion is well passes unanimously, and then our next item on the agenda is end of year planning. Susan, you had three items there you wanted to discuss.
Yes. Oh, good, my mic's on, thank you very much, Dave, for all the work that you've put in to.
Yes, thanks, Dave.
You know, I, I really appreciate it, I know how, how much I have asked you to, to do, and you've been an enormous asset to this administration, so thank you so much.
Dave, I, I apologize for not putting you first, it, it's such a nice night out, sorry to keep you.
I thought, I thought I was first. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thanks.
Okay, so there's a couple of items under different waivers and modifications, so as we're, as we're working our way through the implications of different things that are, you know, of this remote learning, our building project and everything else that's going on. There's two items related to lead benefits that I wanted to bring forward for a discussion. One of them is personal days, so the request is that we allow teachers to use, to take their unused personal days and roll them over into sick days, you know, on a one-time basis. This is not in the future, this is for right now, because teachers are amazing here. They're so committed to students that many of the things that they would have, that they had put in for personal days or would normally be using for personal days, they're postponing all of those because they're spending so much time trying to meet the needs of students that they, they, they don't want to, you know, take time off. And, and so, you know, I would like to request that the teachers be allowed to carry over personal days into their sick days. They get fourteen sick days per year, it only accumulates up to a hundred and twenty-five, and, and then it doesn't go beyond that. But it's just, it's really just a good faith gesture and a, would mean a lot to them for us to recognize them not using their time by saying, you know, let's roll it over into sick time because in this uncertain time of a health crisis, you know, it means a lot to them to know that the board would, would be thinking of them in a forward way like this, so. So that's one that I would like you to consider tonight, is allowing the teachers. There's no other group that this would, you know, involves, everybody else can take a personal day except for administration. We, we don't get much in, in the way of any days off right now, and I'm going to talk about that. You know, vacation days and the implications for that, but this is the only group that's in, in this kind of unique situation. So I guess I'll first see if there's anybody that has any questions about this request for a one-time exemption.
Susan, this is Gary, what's the rationale of putting them into sick days as opposed to saying rolling those into more personal days for next year?
I think it's a custom, you know, often in school districts and pretty much every school district I've been in, personal days rolls in, it's part of a teacher's contract, they roll into, unused personal days roll into, it, it just doesn't happen to be a benefit here, I guess at one point in time, it was part of the CBA, but was removed, you know, a couple of cycles ago. So this is just really, you know, more of a kind of a standard, an industry standard for personal days. And again, I think, given that we're in this kind of unsettled time of, you know, this health crisis that we're in, that putting it into sick days, you know, in case they should have to access some of that, you know, because something happens to their family or themselves, the appropriate, you know, need benefit in that scenario would be sick, not personal.
Susan, this is Amy, how many personal days do they get?
Three.
You said three?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I think, given the amount that we have asked of our staff in this period of time, I support this measure personally because we have asked quite a bit of teachers to have to revamp their whole teaching curriculum on the fly. And I would, I would support this fully.
I don't have a problem either.
Mike, do you want a motion?
Yeah, any other comment or questions or?
No, not from Amy.
If none, let's.
I'm rolling of remaining personal days into next year for teachers.
I second that motion, Kim Shelton.
Okay, any other comment? If none, all those in favor, by roll call vote, Mike Kennison, aye?
Elizabeth McKinney, aye.
Kimberly Shelton, aye.
Gary Swanson, aye.
Amy Tilton, aye.
Great, thank you, Susan, thank you for thinking of that, and hopefully it helps out in at least a small way with it. All the teachers have been doing and will continue to be doing, so, thank you.
So there's the second lead benefit that I would like to discuss also. It impacts your year-round employees, and not all of them, but one of the things I, I do this time of year as a matter of practice is I ask the payroll department to share with me how many vacation days people have on the books. Because the way your handbook and your CBAs, well, your handbook or your contracts are written, it says that employees either use their vacation time or they lose it. Depending on what group you're in, you might be eligible to roll over, you know, five days or maybe ten days into the next year. But if you don't use your time, you lose it, and so this last couple of years, you've gone through a building project, and as a result of going through your building project, primarily, many people, like your custodians and some of your year, other year-round employees have not been able to take time off because they've been frantically running around trying to move, you know, in and out of different sections of buildings, staying out of the way of contractors and all of that. Last year, my understanding is that the, the board allowed everyone to roll over their vacation time and waive the ten-day minimum. And I think that was a wonderful and noble gesture, but what I, but I, but what I know is that there's no way to be able to take twenty-one days rolling over from one year, add another twenty-two days, and get the work done we need to get done. So people having, rolling over, you know, forty-five days of vacation time, it's not possible for them to take the time. So what happens is that you get into a situation we're faced with now where we have this huge liability. And we have a staff that has, time and time again, stepped up to the plate, and I can tell you there's been multiple times this year that people have canceled their vacation because we have had such a need to have them stay here and do work. And now we're coming to the end of the year, and because now we're in a pandemic, there are some groups that can take time, certainly I'm not as worried about custodians being able to use some of their time, but I, I don't see how it's possible for people to be taking the amount of time that we have accumulated over the course of the last couple of years. So what I would like to suggest is that, you know, I will encourage, to the extent it's practical, for people to use their vacation time between now and the end of the year in cases where it is not practical, because we have to have people here staying focused on figuring out how we're going to, you know, navigate and make adjustments to everything that we're doing to hopefully open school next year and using this hybrid approach that if they're not able to do so, because we, we as an organization need them, that we consider paying them for their vacation time that, that's just, is never going to be able to be used. There's no way to roll forward these kinds of balances and, and, and be able to get the work done. There just isn't enough time off to do that, ever, so it, so that's my proposal, is that you, you know, I will encourage people, to the extent practical, to use their vacation time, but if we could pay off, maybe let people roll over maybe five days or something, but pay them for anything beyond that and get that off the books, it would, it would be, I think, one way to be able to settle up with these folks that over the last couple of years have done above and beyond at our request.
So Susan, the, the conundrum was sort of, I don't know, the injustice, if you will, is if, once you get to the end of the, of the fiscal year, folks can only carry over a certain amount of vacation days according to our policy. What they can't carry over, they lose if they don't use. And I, I gather from what you're saying is that folks, you know, given our, our situation, not, not only with this pandemic, but in, in, you know, what brought us here with these extra vacation days really, or carried over vacation days is, is the building project as well. It wouldn't be, wouldn't be all that fair to tell people, we, we really need you, but you're going to lose your vacation days, you're not going to be, you're not going to be compensated for, for vacation days you, you've validly accrued. And is, is it also correct, this sort of, this would be like a one-time thing to sort of level set?
Yes, absolutely, everything here are just one-time, you know, adjustments. This is not something I'm asking you to change your policy about, it's just circumstance that I inherited, and I think that we should address it now and, you know, move forward.
Do you have a, have a sense of a scope, Susan, of, of, that this would entail?
It's a great question, Mike, I think our greatest exposure, and I think this is worst-case scenario, is that it would be about twenty-six thousand. I think that's the worst-case scenario.
So the idea would be, sorry, I'm not trying to monopolize the talking here, but the idea would be that we, we'd stick with our policy, and I had it in mind that it was, you could carry over ten, or I may be wrong on that, but for certain folks, and, but then, then no more. The, the idea would be to encourage them to take vacation because you need vacation, especially when you're stressed out in times like this, but to the extent they can't, we, we pay them those days that, that, beyond the amount that they can't carry over. And, but do it just, just for this year?
Yeah, I based that cost on five days. So that's the waiver from your policy, and so it's a kind of a two-part, one-time change. And the reason why I'm saying only five days and pay them out for the rest is because next year, we're going to have to have all hands on deck because of the pandemic, you know? And so to say, oh, you know, employee who you get twenty-four days off, you're going to, you know, practically be able to take another ten, it, it's not reasonable, it's not going to happen. It, it's, it's just not realistic, and I'm not saying every year, I'm just saying, knowing what we have in front of us right now, to say that you can roll over ten days and you're going to be able to take, it just, it's not, it just isn't. Some of these people are carrying forward right now twenty-eight days because they have not been able to take vacation this year. You know, because they were allowed to roll everything over, and no matter how much you take, you're still ending this year right now with twenty-eight days on the book. And they get another twenty-four when we start in July. So just, see what I'm saying, it's just not practical.
Mike, can I ask a question? So when this happened last year, when you, you allowed, when the employees were allowed to do that, did they know that that was just happening for the current year? Like, was that the understanding? Do you know or remember?
Yeah, boy, my memory isn't perfect on that, Amy, I, I, maybe some of the other board members can chime in, but I understand the, the idea, the fundamental idea was because folks were sort of putting in extra time, you know, and because of the ongoing building construction, you, you remember we had those so-called, you know, the construction term is a summer slam, it's sort of like everybody's on deck, and there were certain folks who just couldn't, couldn't take their vacation time as they normally would. That was the reason.
Administrators, remember, we, we put our vice principals on part-time, so we didn't have any vice principals in the building, so our principals were the ones running the building, so they couldn't take any time off at that time. So they're the ones that had the most, I think our student department also, guidance also, no, guidance was part-time at that time too. But it's mostly the administrators that were working during the construction, they just couldn't take time off because there's nobody else in the building.
Okay.
Susan, you said the, 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 sort of the worst case, and I hate to use that term in this context, but it would be right around twenty-six thousand?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what I'm estimating, I mean, it might be a little bit more, a little less, but I'm just saying, I, I base the analysis on if we allow people to roll over five days, and, and I encourage, like custodians, they can take some days now, and there's no reason why they can't. They're not cleaning the buildings every night, we still need them here during graduation week and stuff, but I, I think that they'll roll down some of theirs, other people not so much, you know? I'm looking at some administrators that are holding twenty-one days, they can't take the next month off. I can't have them out of here for the entire next month. And so, you know, so it, it varies, and it's not everybody, but I wanted, I want to treat everybody the same. And so, you know, new employees, this wouldn't involve new employees, these are your veterans that have been here for the last couple of years. Of course, the changeover to superintendent, that had implications for, for people as well. Going this entire year at the SAU, short four and five people for the entire year, I mean, meant other people couldn't take vacations, you know? Because people had to be here to take care of the work at hand because we didn't have all of our positions filled. So I, it's just a circumstantial situation, and I, I personally have a problem with having people who step up and step forward, you know, and nobody's asking, right? Because these are the kind of people that, you know, will take their lumps. These are the people that got a one percent raise last year, and time and time again, they have done the right thing on behalf of our school district and, and this community, and they've given selflessly. And I just think it's, I, I just want to be, you know, I want to acknowledge, you know, that they're not going to get taken advantage of because of the circumstances when, when they did the right thing, and I just think we should do the right thing in return. It's not going to be possible for them to be able to do that, and next year's going to be a really, you know, demanding year as well. So if we can have this one-time reset, then, you know, I, I will promise you that we will never find ourselves in here, in this situation again, while I'm here, and we won't have these same circumstances in front of us. I'm a person that believes if people are given vacation time, they should take their vacation time. But I've also been in circumstances throughout my career from time to time where the demands of the job, I, I sacrificed myself personally and, for an organization, and then, you know, I wasn't taken care of on the other side, and so I know how that feels as a human, and I, I just want to do the right thing by the people that work here. So that's, that's what I would like you to contemplate tonight. Again, I will encourage people to, to the extent possible. possible and practical, to take time, but there are people on this list that it's not practical and it's not possible.
Susan, if I could just, I think, I think you're, I think we're all sold. So maybe if I could just interject and maybe make a motion that we allow, or that we, shall I use the term buyback, any vacation days for folks over the five days that can't be carried over for the upcoming year only for administrative staff? Is that the?
That's right. I'll second that, Elizabeth.
No, it's not just administrative, Gary. I'm saying, I think for custodians, we will work with them. And if there's an exception in there, like if somebody has some kind of a, you know, a reason to more than five.
Can you give us some language, Susan, for the motion? One of us will adopt it.
Thank you, Mike.
I'm sorry, you broke up. I couldn't hear you.
Yeah, Susan, please give us some quick language for the proper motion for this, and then one of us will adopt it as a motion.
Yeah, if the board would move to allow the administration to entertain buying back anytime over five days that people have carried forward from prior years as a one-time waiver of your handbook and contract and past practices, you know, during this school year.
Mike, I'm not sure if ditto is a Robert's Rules of Order. But I'd like to make a motion on what she said.
I'll second that.
McKinney second, Gary Swanson in first. Any more comment?
As always, Mike, just quickly, thank you to all the people that have worked so diligently this time, the year-round employees on all levels. We appreciate that hard work.
For sure. Mike, an eye.
Elizabeth McKinney.
Kimberly Shelton, eye.
Gary Swanson, eye.
Amy Tilton, eye.
The motion passes unanimously. We're on to action items. We've already taken care of a few. We have approval of minutes from April 30, public minutes.
Mike, I have a couple of other things underending your waivers.
Oh, you do? Okay, I'm sorry.
Yep. One of them is, as we're thinking about planning for the end of the year, you know, and I'm going to go over the new hires, the people that we've been able to secure since the last meeting. But one of the things that I've been thinking of that would be very, very beneficial is if, when we have our last number of days with staff at the end of this year, if we could actually have the new staff start so that they can be part of the planning. One of the activities that we're going to engage in is, as I said before, identifying the learning gaps, developing profiles, and then, you know, kids are going to be going up to, you know, new teachers. And to be able to have conversations with the teachers who taught them this year, that understand the kids, would be invaluable to the new teachers coming in. Also, they're coming into different teams. So I've got a new second-grade teacher, a new third-grade teacher. For them to be able to have time to work with their grade-level teams on the last several days will put them in really such a better place and give them the summer to be able to get themselves ready for the opening of school. Also, you know, for the kids, we have many new staff at the secondary level because we've had the wonderful support of our community to increase the number of staff. To have them be able to, again, you know, work with their colleagues so that they can do the curriculum development work would be just an amazing opportunity for us. It's a one-time opportunity, again. When are you ever in this kind of a scenario where you're closing the year and you have five days of time with your, with your staff? We're also going to be doing a lot of the, or as much as possible, we're going to take care of some of our mandatory trainings at the end of this year so that it frees up time at the beginning of the school year so that we're not spending our time having staff review restraint policies and procedures, you know, EpiPen training, all of those things that are annual trainings that were required to ensure every staff member goes through every year. We want to do as much of that at the end of this year so that we have as much ramp-up time on the first few days before the kids come to help acclimate people to whatever our final, you know, protocols are going to be. So what I would like is to be able to invite the new staff members to join us on those last days. I don't have everybody hired, but I wanted to bring that forward to you as a concept. It's not something you'd have to necessarily approve today. You could contemplate it now and vote on it next, next time, but I wanted to get it out in front, out in front of it. You may ask me, well, how much will that cost? And I would have to know the salary rates of the people that we hire. I believe that it's entirely possible by next Thursday that we'll have all our professional staff positions filled, and I can certainly give you a ballpark on what that would be. We'd have to pay people per diem for those days, but it would be invaluable time for planning.
Susan, that concept makes a lot of sense to me in general, and I, and I just, the thought comes to mind is that why, and I'm probably exposing my ignorance here again, why wouldn't you kind of do that every year rather than sort of when you hire new folks, they just show up and, you know, there may not be that. Is there other ways you typically integrate new staff?
Well, again, this is a one-time opportunity, Mike, because typically, students get out on one day, and staff are usually out on the very day students are out, or they're out the very next day. So there just is no opportunity to do that. And of course, you have to have all your staff hired in time to be able to invite them. That's another part of it, which is something that I'm, I really work hard to do, is to get all staff hired before June. But that's the reason why, Mike, you usually don't have those days.
Right.
Usually not there. So what, oftentimes you'll see is many school districts have, you know, like three- or four-day orientation programs for new staff coming in. And so in my prior school district, we had new staff come in three days the week prior to all staff reporting, and we did some orientation where they got their credentials, they could get in, they could see what their schedules are, try to get familiar as they could with kids, learn how to use your software, you know, access, you know, Infinite Campus if they're not familiar with it because they're using Power School in their prior district. So it's a lot of like sit-and-get type, type of experience. This would, this is like much more gentle, you know? But it's a one-time situation, and I think we should just take advantage of it because as much curriculum development time we can have, you know, the better off our kids are going to be in the upcoming year. So that's the reason why. It's just, it's just a one-time opportunity, and I'd like to take advantage of that.
Susan, obviously, it's going to depend a bit on the teachers coming in and whether they finish their existing school days. But what kind of, what's your, your expectation on how you're going to run this if we're still doing remote? Are you thinking of having in the auditorium or something, and the gym, and six-foot separation, or is it just going to be a remote sort of atmosphere?
Well, that's a great question, Gary. We haven't finished the planning for it. We've got our topics, and we haven't delved into the nitty-gritty logistical details. What our greatest hope is, and I'm not saying we can do it, but, and we certainly wouldn't force anyone to come into the buildings if they're not comfortable, but what we would like to be able to do is use some social distancing protocols like we would when the new school year begins so that teachers can begin to feel more comfortable with what the new environment would be like. It would probably be, again, a hybrid approach. So those are our initial thoughts on how we would do that. Right now, they have their team meetings. They do that using Google Hangouts. There's some things you can do, but there's still a need to come in and get manipulatives and resources and things like that. So if we use our protocols, again, protocols include things like if you do not feel well, do not come in, you know? Then hop on and participate remotely. Wear your masks, you know? Keep your distance, you know? Washing hands, bathroom protocols, only, you know, you have to clean, you know, doorknobs and things. So, you know, it's an opportunity for us to...
I guess also, I guess the question also is how many people are we legally supposed to have in a building? You know, are we still at the 10-person maximum? Or, so there's that, that aspect that we need to consider as well?
It's not per building, Gary, right? So the rule is that you can't have more than 10 people in, you know, congregating in an area. So you could, yeah, that's what the, that's what the rule is on that. And so we have to talk this through with teachers, and we just really haven't gotten down that far, but that's some of our thinking, you know? If teachers say, you know, I'm totally uncomfortable with that, then, then we'll honor that, you know? We'll honor that, and we'll do it remotely in small groups. It's all good, you know? There are teachers that want to come in. There are teachers that are coming in now to clean out their classroom. We're using these protocols now. So it's about resocializing everybody into this new norm that we have, and the more that we're doing it, the more, you know, people feel more comfortable. I think it was a huge, a huge success and a relief when, when people came to our reverse, kind of reverse parade because they could see that, yeah, I mean, there we had lots of people, but we weren't all congregated in the same area. So, so that's, that's what the...
Be in favor of it. I think maybe we should, I wonder if we should maybe table it until we can find out financially what the cost may be, how many staff would be interested in it, what the logistics would be, just so we feel a little more like our due diligence has been completely done, we're not paying any unnecessary risks.
Yep. Well, I thought that, you know, to your point earlier, to let you, give you a heads up when, when these are, coming forward to, to let you know. But this one doesn't have an urgency for you to take a vote tonight, but I would need a vote, you know? And also Dave's planning on doing a financial report next week, so we'll all have a better understanding of where we are financially, what the landscape's looking like. And like I said, I'm hoping that I'll be able to land these last few teaching positions, and then I can give you an idea of what the financial cost might be. Some of them I've talked to during the interview just to get a sense of when their school districts are finishing. And so not everybody could stay all six days, but even if they could come to three, you know? Some might be able to come for four. But I'll just use an average based on the conversations I'm having when I'm doing final interviews with, with the staff that were...
Sounds like Susan doesn't need a vote. Should we, do you need a motion to table, or can we just have it as a discussion item and?
Yep, no, we just, we can defer a vote until, until next meeting, next Thursday. But thanks for the, thanks for the questions and the presentation, Susan. It sounds like a really thoughtful idea.
Yeah, and then there's a couple of things, like, I just wanted to talk for a moment about graduation because it's different. I don't think it's going to have any, although we'll spend our graduation money differently, right now I don't think we're going to spend more. If we're going to spend a little more on graduation, I don't think it's going to be like significant amounts of money. So, but I did want to mention a few things, costs that we would have this year that would be different than costs that we would normally incur. In some cases, we'll not be spending money on other things. So like, for example, we rent staging, and it's a huge platform that has multi tiers so that kids can sit and be able to see out. Well, kids are not going to be able to sit on the stage this year, so we need smaller staging, so we save money on that. Something that we're going to spend money on because of the need to adhere to these protocols is that families will only, will not be able to be taking pictures, getting out of their cars and taking pictures of their, of their kids as they're receiving their diploma. Usually, last year when I was here, kids, when they got their diploma, would receive it and they would stand and get their picture taken with the diploma open. Well, parents are not going to be able to do that. So what we will do instead is have a photographer that will take those pictures and, and then take candid shots as well. And so we're getting a price right now with the savings from the stage to offset the cost of providing every family with an eight-by-10 frame picture of their, of their child, you know, with a diploma like we have historically. And then each family would be able to take a candid, buy candid. And then if they want to buy more, that's fine, but I wanted to make sure that every student had the opportunity to have pictures, families that don't have the same resources that other families. You know, if they can't get up and take their pictures digitally, then they may not be able to afford to have pictures. So I just felt it was important that we just provide everybody with some kind of a package. They can, again, they can buy beyond that, but at least every family would walk away with some graduation pictures and, and great memories of their students as the kiddos graduating. So that's an example of an expense. We're not going to be able to have, you know, the class president and the other kids who generally get up and give a speech. They're not going to be able to do that from, from the podium. So they're working on doing a virtual one, that then we would cast up. So in order to be able to do that, we need to have a screen, you know, that, that folks can view their pre-recorded presentation on. So we're going to have a cost for that. So some things we're going to have cost for, we wouldn't otherwise, and other things we won't. So I just wanted to mention that, but when we were talking about it this week, it didn't look, it looked like they roughly offset, but we're still looking for some prices on, on a few items that, that we don't have quotes on yet. So I just wanted to mention that. I don't, I thought originally when I put it, geez, we might spend more money, but it's looking like maybe not. So that was it. Those are, you know, and I'll probably keep some of these items on here from now until, until we finish the year because I suspect that things are going to crop up. There is one thing that I noticed that I don't see on this, and that's to have a conversation about our next meeting, but we can do that at the end of the meeting because awards night for grad, for graduation week is on the same night we're scheduled to have our school board meeting. And I just felt that it would be in poor taste to have a board meeting at the same time we're having an awards banquet, even though it's virtual. So I just want to talk about...
Yeah, how dare the awards banquet interfere with our meeting? I agree.
Yeah, well, we don't have all the particulars worked out with that, but I didn't want, our, our meeting sometimes can go on.
Kidding. But do, do we want to talk about another date right now, or?
Yeah, I, yeah. I mean, if you all have your calendars.
Sure.
Would that Wednesday work?
Mike, it looks like Kim dropped out. Wednesday, what date?
The 21st.
Okay, this is, this is a little of the 22nd meeting.
Yeah.
This is the next, the next meeting, the 21st is fine. It would be our first meeting in June.
Ah, so we're going to, we're good for the 22nd, but it's our next meeting in June. Let me look at my calendar.
Yeah, it's the first meeting in June.
Well, it looks like Kim's back as well.
So that would be scheduled for the night, I'm sorry, for the 11th normally?
It would? I have the 4th.
I have the 11th.
Okay, well, then maybe it's not a, well, that seems like a long time.
In any event, can we do, would the 11th work?
Can we schedule a meeting at first week of June because it seems like things are coming up at such a pace, to Amy's point earlier? I'd rather cancel one.
Yeah, what's the, what's, what's the 3rd look like for people? Wednesday, June 3rd?
I have to give my dog medicine, but other than that, it's wide open.
I'm available on the 3rd, Mike.
I'm available, Mike. It's Amy.
I'm available, Mike.
Okay. Okay. It, it looks like we all are. Will that work, Susan?
Yep. That works fine. Thank you. And we can do the 11th too, just in case, because there's just so much going on that I'd rather cancel them. But I just feel like there's a lot of situations that keep arising and.
Right. Okay. Anything else, Susan, before we go on to the action items?
No, that's it for my, for the end of the year waivers. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're on to action items. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 30 meeting?
Actually, Mike, I noticed a few, or do you want to do those under discussions? Change it?
You got, you got edits, Gary? Yeah. Why don't we get the motion in the second out? Make, make, make your, you make the motion with your proposed edits. How's that?
Okay. I make a motion. We accept the minutes from, what date was that? April 3rd with edits.
30th.
30th.
Thank you. The ending time was, it was, it must've been 6:20, not 5:22, which is a bit of a point.
Attach.
And then the motion for, does allow the superintendent to hire going forward to the summer months. I re-listened to it. It sounds like what we said is we gave her the rights to hire retained staff until the next meeting. So I think the minutes are incorrect, but I think we also need to review that because that was kind of.
I think, I think you're right, Gary, on that. And it, it's a very good point. It, that was the motion. My memory is pretty clear on that. But if we need Susan to extend that, we ought to do that tonight.
Yeah. So as far as the minutes, I think we need to correct that was to hire and retain stash, staff until the next meeting. And then we can make a motion to extend it after.
Yep. And that's?
Nope, that was it.
Any other changes? Gary's got a, Gary's got a motion. He don't need his, his second.
I'll second it, Sammy.
If there's no other comments, do a roll call. Mike Kennison, aye?
Elizabeth McKinney, aye.
Kimberly Shelton, aye.
Gary Swanson, aye.
Amy Tilton, aye.
And Susan, before we forget, do you, would it be helpful for you to still have that hiring, such a hiring authority?
Absolutely. I've got some urns on the fire. As you can see, I've not only issued contracts, I've received them back for many of the people that I'm going to introduce to you tonight. So it's essential that I have the authority to move forward. I don't want to lose people. You've got to get them off the market.
Yeah. I would suggest that rather than stepping up just to the next meeting if the board's comfortable, that we just, we, we approve it or somebody can move to do it, allow that through the end of the, of the school year. Would that make more sense, Susan?
That would be, that would be great.
I'd like to make a motion. We allow the superintendent to hire and retain staff through the end of the school year.
I'll second that.
Who's seconding it? Elizabeth?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comment? If not, we'll call, Mike Kennison, aye?
Elizabeth McKinney, aye.
Kimberly Shelton, aye.
Gary Swanson, aye.
Amy Tilton, aye.
The motion passes unanimously. And then the approval of the manifest, I think Teresa sent those over to us. Does somebody want to make a motion to approve the manifest?
I move that we approve the total for all manifests in the amount of $1,850,568.80.
I'm sorry. It was 468 on my copy, not 568.
I don't know.
You're, you're.
4:31 PM today?
Yeah. I, I got, I got $1,854.68.
So I have 568 on mine. Does anyone else have theirs handy?
All right. In the text, it says 568. I haven't actually looked at the manifest. In the body of the email, it said that. In the manifest themselves says 468.
I have 468.
But I'm assuming the, the document's correct and the email is probably just a typo.
Yeah. I will amend that motion to $1,850,000.
468.
$468.80.
80 cents. Yes.
Right.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Amy.
There's no comment or discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Elizabeth McKinney, aye.
Kimberly Shelton, aye.
Gary Swanson, aye.
Amy Tilton, aye.
Okay. We've already approved the auditor's contract, the technology bid and the, and the end of year modifications. Susan, is there anything more on, on a hiring update or should we go into non-public?
I believe we were going to go into not public. I would share that and then I can, we can come back out and I can do the public session on that.
So I would seek a motion to go into non-public pursuant to RSA 91A colon 3, comma, 3B, 3B and C.
I'll second that.
So move Gary Swanson.
I'll second that.
Reverse order.
There we go. And by roll call vote, all those in favor, please say aye. Mike Kennison, aye?
Elizabeth McKinney, aye.
Kimberly Shelton, aye.
Gary Swanson, aye.
Amy Tilton, aye.
All right. We have another link to go into that non-public meeting. Let's go there now. So it's eight o'clock. We're back in public session. So Susan, do you have some nominations of staff hiring?
I do. The first candidate she ran, we move forward the nomination as our junior senior high school Mandarin teacher. She has a master's degree from Brandeis in teaching Chinese. She has a bachelor's degree in teaching Chinese as a second language. She's received her bachelor's degree and her, her, her secondary education in China. And she comes with one year of teaching experience. I'd like to thank Sean Stein, Erin Copeland and Lynn Healy for interviewing and screening our candidates. We interviewed five other Mandarin teachers and we're very pleased to have her join our staff. The second candidate being nominated tonight is Elizabeth Miller. Elizabeth Miller has a bachelor's degree in music from Columbia College in Chicago. She has two years of teaching experience. She taught here this year on a long-term substitute basis to replace a teacher on leave. We interviewed two other candidates for the position. I would like to thank Sarah Denham, Annette Blake, Jamie Ray and Lynn for their efforts to screen music candidates. And so she is my second nomination. Third is Wesley Horn for the position of high school science teacher. Leslie has her bachelor's degree in biology from East Carolina University. She has 23 years of teaching experience. She is licensed, has national board certification as a science teacher, is certified in North Carolina in Maine and is currently, has applied for certification here in New Hampshire. She has, like I said, 23 years of teaching experience. She has taught chemistry at all levels. She has taught AP environmental science, AP biology, biology. She's staff on the National Next Generation Science Standard and Science Curriculum Committee for the state of North Carolina. She's a test writer for the state exams and she's also an AP reader for biology and environmental science. So we are thrilled to have her come on board. She was interviewed and screened by Allison DeBro, Sean Stein and Lynn Healy. I'd like to thank them for their, their efforts in screening candidates. We had, they, they had interviewed, I think, two other candidates, though it's not written here for that position. The next position is a full-time speech language pathologist at the elementary school level. We are moving forward to nominate Dana McKenna. Dana was a part-time speech language pathologist here this year. She has a bachelor's degree in communication disorder from the University of Vermont. She also has a master's degree in speech language pathology from Syracuse University. She has many years of teaching or speech language pathology, service delivery at both schools and in private, private medical facilities. She was interviewed by Christina Cochran and Cassie Laura Carmichael and Erica McNeil. And we're excited to have her join us on a full-time basis next year at the elementary school. Replacing her at the part-time position would be our retiring speech pathologist, Susan Raymond. So she's retiring on a full-time basis, but she is returning to fill that point two position in speech language pathology. She has a bachelor's degree in history with a minor in communication disorder from Worcester State. She has a master's degree in communication disorders from the University of New Hampshire. She was a, or, sorry, university, yeah, UNH, New Hampshire. She's worked in New Market for the past 17 years. Prior to that, she worked in Gary for 14 years as a speech language pathology and before that in Epping. So we are absolutely thrilled to have her continuing on on a part-time basis, filling that position. Also nominating tonight, Alyssa, Allison Bristol, another very exciting candidate. She would be taking the third grade teaching position. Allison comes to us with a double bachelor's degree from King State. She has a bachelor's degree in science in elementary education and a BA in English. She has four years of teaching experience. She's been teaching fourth grade for the last four years at Laconia. She's also been a title one tutor and apparel professional in Multon Borough and a girls' running coach. So we are absolutely thrilled to have her join us at the elementary school next year. Those are the nominations, but I would also like to announce that Randy Critchett will be replacing Brian O'Connor as the head custodian as of May 1st. And we've also filled the math tutor, title one math tutor position with Elena Stedman and she comes to us as a certified teacher. She's certified in Maine and is currently seeking her licensure in New Hampshire. She has nine years of teaching experience in the area of math at the elementary level. She was, for six and a half years, she was a title one math teacher in two SAUs. She was also a long-term sub for one year in Scarborough, Maine. And she's currently in math intervention in Saco. So we are absolutely thrilled to have her join our core of staff that will be teaching our kids next year. So those are the hires that transpired between our last meeting and tonight.
Thank you, Susan, for that and, and for all that goes into it and for everybody who was in helping on interviews. I would seek a motion to approve those nominations.
So move Gary Swanson.
I'll second that, Amy.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing on, let's do a roll call vote. Mike Kennison, aye?
Elizabeth McKinney, aye.
Kimberly Shelton, aye.
Gary Swanson, aye.
Amy Tilton, aye.
Okay. It's unanimous. Thanks again, Susan. I think that brings us to the end of our agenda, which I don't have up right now. Our next meeting is next Thursday at 5 o'clock. And again, remote. So if there's no other business, I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Gary, Gary wants, yep.
Yes. Maybe for our next meeting, we start considering superintendent evaluation process. I know it's not until August, but my rationale is that if we're going to involve the staff at all, we want to certainly have something in place prior to the end of the school year.
Okay. Yeah. Sure. You, what are you suggesting we put that on as a discussion item?
Yeah. I assume we need to have some sort of protocol or evaluation process. I don't know if we've done that, the certain process we used in the past, whether that's involved the staff at all.
Okay. Let me, um, let's, let's consider that. I, I just trying to think off the top of my head whether that needs to be a non-public or not. I don't know off the top of my head. But a point, point taken, Gary. Let, let, let me give it some thought.
Very good.
Any other, any other comments?
I will second the motion if it's still on the table for adjournment.
Still there. And all those in favor, Mike Kennison, aye?
Elizabeth McKinney, aye.
Kimberly Shelton, aye.
Gary Swanson, aye.
Amy Tilton, aye.
Okay. Thanks everyone for sticking through a long meeting. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.